Good morning, welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting for September 14th, 2010. And at this time, I'll ask that we have the roll call.
Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
Here.
Supervisor Foy.
Here.
Supervisor Long and Supervisor Parks.
Here, and I'm subbing in for Supervisor Long, who isn't available today, and I hope, I know she's in a better place, and will be with us at our next meeting. Now, it's time for an item on our agenda, which is our moment of inspiration, and today we have someone from Ventura, Mr. Burns Simon. If you'd like to come up to the microphone there, Mr. Simon is a Holocaust survivor, and he's going to give us a couple minutes of inspiration.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for inviting me, ladies and gentlemen, supervisors, everybody. Supervisor, chairman of the board, Kessie Long, I've made it to Red, White and Blue Ball a few months ago, at the Reagan Library. Well, I'm really inspired by this great wonderful country of ours, the freedom when I landed here from Havana in New York, the freedom, the organization, the freedom to choose, to do anything you want to do under the law. I'm inspired by the great organization of our supervisors who lead us, and I'm leading too, I'm leading children. When I speak to schools, I became a teacher, I say, "You can do anything you want to do. You can become anybody, you can do anything in this great wonderful country of ours, under the law." When I swim daily, I swim on my back, I'm inspired by the clouds, by the birds, by the butterflies, by the planes and the clouds that move, and I'm very grateful for life, I enjoy life, and I'm inspired by life, and I tell my students to learn, become great leaders also. And I'm very happy also to hear this wonderful music, like for instance, I came behind Rudy Valley, but I came here in 1940 as an immigrant, and I heard Bing Crosby and Frank Sinatra, and I'm inspired by this wonderful music we have here, by the big band. And I'm very grateful to be living here in this great country of ours since 1940 as an immigrant with four dollars who came to these shores, and I'm very grateful to have been invited to speak to you, and I'm truly inspired by, again, like, by the freedom we have, the choices we have, by our leadership, and I'm, I think I'm a good teacher to teach my students to recognize the fellow students, for instance, like, accept him, accept her, and I'm teaching tolerance. And I wanted to say, ladies and gentlemen, of the Board of Supervisor work of our, of our great wonderful county, who I have lived since 40, my country is of the sweet land of liberty, to thee I sing, land where my fathers did not die, where I am ready and willing to die in the very near future, and I'm ready. And I'd like to read you a few lines from something that I have, that I have found, and it goes like, a short, a short, a few short lines, and, okay. The gift of time, don't put off till tomorrow, what could be done today? Don't let excuses stop you as you go on your way, for tomorrow is a mystery, today is close at hand, reach out to someone who is in need. Tell them you understand, show someone that you really care, give a hug or two, let someone hear three little words, a simple "I love you." Listen to what others say, truly lend them an ear, ease a worry, lift a care, or quiet someone's fears. So many things we all, we all could do if it simply takes the time to love and laugh and listen, and to others, just be kind. Don't put off until tomorrow, what could be done today? The gift of time so precious as you go on your way. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming, I appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm a proud member of the United States Armed Forces from 1942 to 48, who are volunteered for the US military, and I'm very happy to be alive and to have come to this, to this very day. Thank you again, goodbye.
Thank you so much. And I met Mr. Simon, as he said, at the Red, White and Blue Gala, and was very inspired by a Holocaust survivor, and what a wonderful positive attitude, and it's so great that you're also teaching the children. Thank you. At this time then, we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Robinson, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Religious Justice, one nation, under God, in the business of liberty, justice and all.
And our next item are the minutes of our meeting of January 12.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue the minutes for another week.
Got a motion and a second, and if we can vote. And our next item is our agenda review, and Ms. Robinson?
Yes, Chair Parks, we have one item, and we're requesting that item 22 be pulled from the agenda, a brief turn at a later date.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the Board of Supervisors wish to make any additions or changes to the agenda?
I don't have any changes to the agenda. I do want to point out, I had a conversation with our clerk of the board, Roberta, this morning, that our advanced calendars may not be completely accurate for the next couple weeks, so if you look on there, some stuff that was scheduled for the 21st is appearing as a 28th because of some computer problems.
We'll be getting a revised, advanced agenda. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, one other announcement, we now have internet, wireless internet capability in the boardroom, so those of you who are coming into the boardroom and waiting for items, you can still work on the internet, you just bring up your system and go to board, the boardroom, boardroom, it's under boardroom, so you can bring up the internet and work in the boardroom if you are here waiting for an item.
That's wonderful. All right, then with that, do we have a motion to accept the agenda as revised, and that would be with item 22 continued?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And if we please vote, that passes unanimously, and we'll now move on to our next item, which is our consent agenda items, and that would be items 10 through 21. Pardon me?
22.
Except that one got continued, correct? So it's 10 through 21. And do we have a motion, or does anyone want to call out any?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that also passes unanimously, we're on a roll here. Our next item on the agenda is our public comments, and I have a few public comment cards, if you want to speak and have an already filled out one of these yellow, sorry, blue public comment cards, please do, and we also take yellow ones, which you can just write some comments on it, and we'll pass them along and read them. Okay, so on our public comments, I have first up would be Lorraine Sandoval, if you'd like to come down to the microphone.
Good morning. Hi, I'm Lorraine Sandoval, I work in the emergency room at County, and yes, us nurses are back again. And I just want to say that we've been negotiating this contract for almost a year now, and it's, if we were greedy nurses, we would, we would have jumped ship to the private hospitals a long time ago. We have not had raises since 2008, and we believe that we have sacrificed for years. We train the new grads in the county with our expertise and our experience at our new trauma center, only to watch a lot of them leave and go to the private hospitals for more money, to make much more money. I fear that we will lose more nurses now from our trauma center and be unable to replace them due to the low wages. We would like to retain our experienced and dedicated nurses and get the respect that we deserve from the county. That's it.
Thank you for your comments. And our next up is Linda Weiss, followed by Greg Thayer. Ms. Weiss?
I'd really love for other people to speak, but no one else can get up the nerve, so I'm back again. And I'm back again about the CNA contract, and I echo Lorraine's comments that we're concerned, not greedy. And of course, we're concerned about paying 3% more to our retirement, bringing our total contribution to 4.1% out of a total of 5.1%. And we're not swayed by articles in the Ventura County Star, we know that the 3% shared sacrifice is not being equitably shared across negotiating units. But mark my point, we are less concerned about ourselves than about the quality of care that we are concerned will follow. We are very concerned about recruitment and retention of experienced nurses. We're talking about opening a PICU here, a pediatric intensive care unit, and as Lorraine or Greg will tell you, hiring in the ER out of the last six or seven hires, the majority of them, all but one were new graduates. So we work here because we want to serve the public, not underserve them. So it is our intention to reject the county's last, best and final offer, not for ourselves, but for the future of public health care. It is our intention to keep the impact in front of you and the public, because the public has our back, we will be back here. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Greg Thayer. Good morning.
Good morning. This board has given direction to the county negotiators, and I would very much like to encourage you guys to give them new directions. You know, as been pointed out, we have not had a pay raise in over two years, recruitment and retention is a problem. I'm sure that you're being told that there's no problem filling the slots at the county hospital. I met with, at the new employee orientation yesterday with seven new nurses, and they are new nurses, all new grads, the one that had some experience, had worked for a year and a half at Ojai Hospital, which is the least utilized hospital in the county, and she's going to be put into the emergency room. She'll be somebody that will be down there inexperienced, who will have to be being trained and watched by people like Lorraine, who is trained and experienced. And this is what the county's been doing, you know, over the decades that I've been with the county, I've seen this cycle where the county says, "We can do it, everything's fine, everything's fine, everything's fine," and then it becomes a crisis. We're becoming a crisis at this point, we're a new trauma center, we have another campus over in Santa Paula, it's becoming increasingly difficult to staff both of the hospitals with the adequate mix of experienced, trained nurses, you know, it takes four, five years to really get your feet under you when you're there. I mean, you can't just like have a brand-new grad come and say, "Okay, you know, yes, they fill the slot that the state requires," but they do not fill the slot that you need, you need experienced people, and those experienced people are more and more leaving to go to hospitals that pay more. You know, the top salary range is 34.69 in the RN, senior RN class for the county. An equivalent nurse with five years' experience at St. John's is being paid 41-something an hour, and they were getting another pay raise in November. When nurses come in to the county area and they look at the two hospitals, you know, "Where would you work?" You say, "Oh, I can make $1,000 more here, and, you know, probably work a little bit less, you know, don't have to work those extra shifts." Santa Paula ER was being run, essentially being staffed with nurses that were working 60 hours a week. There were two nurses there, I understand, from Lorraine, that are now out on disability, and it's impacting the ability to staff both hospitals. You know, this is just, you know, business sense, you know, you have to have the staff and the right mix of experience in order to keep the service level at where we want it. We have the best healthcare system, I'm convinced, of any place in California, you know, but as people like me retire, the people who would take my place are more and more leaving the county employee because of the, you know, because of, you know, the entire, you know, salary and benefit package, you know, the way that things are being structured. So, you know, that's all I want to do, I just, you know, would like this board to, you know, tell the negotiators that maybe they need to bend a little bit on this. I know that you've given them strict instructions, no pay raises for anybody, you know, get another, more, you know, retirement contribution, but hopefully the board will see the need to actually give different instructions, and that in some cases, it's better to bend than to let the place break, so that's my comments.
Thank you, thank you very much. And I do know we have tremendous respect for the nurses and don't think that you're greedy, we're just in a difficult economic time, I know. So that concludes, I believe, our public comments. At this point then, we'll go on to our next item on the agenda, and that would be the board comments. And Supervisor Foy, would you like to start?
Thank you, appreciate it. It's good to be back. I do want to adjourn the memory of the people on this list, also had the opportunity to be at the Reagan on Saturday when they had their Freedom Walk, a very interesting opportunity with Harry Sinise and a gentleman who was one of the people who saved two of the 20 people that were saved, and it was really an interesting, I had the opportunity to sit next to him at dinner, and, you know, you sit back and you hear and you talk about this and you listen, and you realize, you don't really want to be a first responder, some of the things that they go through and what they have to deal with, and some of the stuff he was saying, that the, what he saw, that he could, just can't leave his mind, we just have so much respect for the people willing to do that work, and it was just good to see that. And we never forget that our country was attacked and we responded, but it's a tough time for all those families, so anyway, my comments, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Zaragoza?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'd also like to adjourn the memory of the individuals on this list, and I'd just like to share, you know, that if you remember reading the paper about that young lady and the two children that got run over on Vineyard and Simon Way, that was very disturbing to me, and I'm sure to everybody, and the children are doing well, except for the baby one, I understand that he needs quite a bit of attention, so we've set up a benefit fund over at Wells Fargo and Oxnard, or any Wells Fargo for that matter, and that account is under the Vasquez family. And also, my office has been very involved, if anybody needs additional information, I'm providing some funds, you can call at 654-2613. Mr. Vasquez, you know, the dad, has been very appreciative and wanted me to share with all of you that he's very grateful for the, for the comments and the prayers and so forth. And additionally, I want to thank the VCMC staff, and I had the opportunity that evening to go over to the ICU, and they were very, very diligent, and Michael, I'd like to thank your people, you know, because they were very, very good in taking care of the, as taking care of the, of those folks, the first responders, you know, Ventura County firefighters and Oxnard firefighters who are there within probably a minute, you know, to take care of the children. And as you know, they were dragged a quarter of a mile from Simon Way all the way to Walnut, which is really horrific, you know, so. Also, I had the opportunity to attend over at the University of Channel Islands, the Bracero Program, you know, the Bracero Program, and happened here in the US from 1944 to 64, and the Braceros at that, Braceros, and I found out just recently that, that means strong arms, you know, they were brought from Mexico at the time to help the US in the need of, at the time of labor. And this was done in conjunction with the university and also the Smithsonian Institute from Washington DC as part of the oral history for the US, very well attended. In addition to, you know, we had our first follow-up yesterday on our senior summit, you know, we had a senior summit for our seniors at, in conjunction with the VCMC, Ventura, and also the Oxnard College and the city of Oxnard and my office, and we had the first follow-up workshop at the Wilson Center, and one of the main topics was diabetes, and that's one of the biggest concerns of, we have diabetes and also high blood pressure. And we're also going to have, as we speak today, we have one over in South Oxnard, my staff members are doing that, that workshop with Joan Arriho, she's the deputy director for HCA, Ambulatory Care, and also Claire Rithner, nurse educator, and Jenny Murray, a registered dietitian, after she started, or after she finished speaking, I decided I have no more hamburgers for me, no more french fries, and, and I says, "What do we eat?" He says, "A balanced diet." He says, "Thank you." Moderation is what she said, very, very good presenters do, by the way. And also, you know, the, I attended the Mexican Independence Parade in Oxnard, you know, this is a bi-centennial, 200 years of independence for, for the country of Mexico. And additionally, you know, the, we have, we're going to also honor United Way, today we have the Bourne Learning at the Nylund Acres Center, is at the Annex, by United Way and this on the Day of Carrying, and this is a discovery path that's going to be set up there at the Nylund Annex, and I understand that they have one in Simi Valley or Thousand Oaks already. And so you follow this path and you learn certain items about either trees, or how the world works, or how the environment works, and so we're going to set that up with, on the Day of Carrying. And that's my report.
And Supervisor Bennett, do you have some comments?
Thank you. Really pleased to announce that right after we went dark in August, on August 17th, Mr. John Hessen made a donation of $22,000 to the Sheriff's Department's K-9 program in memory of his wife Renee Hessen, who had recently passed away. The amount was sufficient to pay for a K-9 and all the requisite training to make the K-9 patrol ready. The German Shepherd's named Renetta in honor of Mr. Hessen's wife, Renetta is the German translation of Renee. And both Mr. and Mrs. Hessen had for years admired the K-9 program run by the Sheriff's Department, it was remarkable contribution, out of the blue there, and want to make sure that he's properly recognized for that. On September 11th, I had the pleasure of attending the flag retirement ceremony at the Veterans Home, along with the groundbreaking ceremony for the National Search Dog Foundation's Training Center, and both of them were great events to attend. The other thing I want to let the board members know is that, I'd mentioned it a year ago, and we're back around now again, we're doing the OK Drill in the Ojai Valley, and tomorrow evening, and we're asking people to put up these bright yellow OK signs in their windows, and the purpose of putting those up is if there was a real disaster, people would put those up so that emergency personnel could move faster and skip the houses that have the OKs and get on to people that are more in need of help, and it's an opportunity for us to practice our whole communication system up in Ojai. So citizens, it's a once-a-year opportunity to remind people to check their supplies, check their plan, tune their radios to 1610, post their OK signs, and check on any elderly or handicapped people that are, that may need assistance in their neighborhood, let them know they will be there for them during emergencies and stuff. Last year, we had 86 volunteers and accounted 944 OK signs put up in the Ojai Valley, and the goal is to try to surpass that this year, and we really appreciate the partnership with the Fire Department, the Sheriff's Department, City of Ojai, the Ojai CERT program, we have 350 people have been trained in CERT in the Ojai Valley since we started this push three years ago, and Ventura County Auxiliary Communications, that's our ham radio operators up there. This has been a great program for the Ojai Valley, and encourage everybody to try to set these kind of things up. Thank you very much.
Thank you Supervisor Bennett, and it was nice going to the Saticoy Veterans Home celebration for the, looking at a flag retirement ceremony and a lot of hours in the sun there. I also was able to attend the CSAC, the California State Association of Counties meeting in Sacramento last week, looking at some of the propositions and measures on the ballot, and was able to represent our wishes there. Also was able to attend a Santa Susana Field Lab press conference, Assembly Member Brownlee, Senator Pavley, City Council Member Greg Smith from the city of Los Angeles were there, and also Brad Sherman, our congressman, came together to make a point of thanking the DOE, the Department of Energy, and NASA for signing on to cleaning up that portion of rocketine to the highest levels. And our emphasis at the press conference was now asking the major land And our emphasis at the press conference was now asking the major landowner there, Boeing, to also come on board, get with the program, and also clean up to the highest levels. And that would make it safe there. Also residents were there that were very thankful also for the federal government for taking on their responsibility. And we are very appreciative of that. I was also able to attend a nice Eagle Scout ceremony for two young men in my district, James McAfee and Derek Leung, as well as attending an AAUW, American Association of University Women's Meeting. And heard Rose Smith, Rose Hayden Smith, with our UC Extension Agricultural Advisor, present a really good informative session on actually how patriotic it is to have your own gardens and talking about victory gardens, but also how we can, people who have excess vegetables or fruit trees and can't use all the fruit that they grow, that they can give it to Food Share. And there were people in the audience there that had just learned about that and were excited to do that. On Wednesday, I have a, Casa Cano in Newberry Park is going to be having their Municipal Advisory Council meeting. And a couple of things on their agenda, as well as the Santa Rosa Valley Max Agenda, is formation of graffiti teams, volunteers who, graffiti removal teams, volunteers who will get out there and help clean graffiti out of the channels. As Supervisor Foye has some Boy Scout groups doing it in Simi Valley and the Moore Park area. These are volunteers that are willing to do that. And in the Casa Cano area of Newberry Park, we're also, on that agenda, we're also looking at having a day where people can access the, there's paths along the channel so they can actually go back there. And we're looking at maybe some restoration cleanup areas of that channel and make it more accessible and safe. So having a day where the community can actually go walking out there. And it's actually quite pretty in an area that has a lot of potential. So I'm looking forward to that walk along the channel. And I also want to close in honor of the people on this list and especially call out one individual, A.J. Castro, Andrew Jordan Castro, 20-year-old Westlake High School graduate who died in Afghanistan and was able to attend that funeral, but is a classmate of my children too. And it's just, you just realize, you know, when it really hits home, when we lose some of these wonderful heroes in our community and how young they were. So I know he's sorely missed, as are others on this list. And that concludes my board comments and we'll go on now. Yes?
I forgot to adjourn the memory of the people on this list. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I think with that, then, that concludes board comments. And we'll move on then to the next item on our agenda, which is item 31, I hear. Thank you. And this is the Behavioral Health Department and Melanie Roy.
Good morning.
Good morning Chairman Long, Members of the Board, Mrs. Robinson, Melanie Roy from the Behavioral Health Department. Item 31 requests your approval and authorization for the Behavioral Health Director to sign and submit a Mental Health Services Act capital facilities project plan to the State Department of Mental Health. This project is for the conversion of Hillmont House from an MHRC, Mental Health Rehab Center, to a short-term social rehab. This plan was referenced in our component proposal, which was approved by your board on May 12th and was sent to State DMH on July 9th, or was approved by State DMH on July 9th. We received an allocation of $9 million for the development of projects, which will support our infrastructure required to meet the needs of the newly developed MHSA programs. And of that allocation, $4 million has been allocated for capital facilities projects. We've been working with the Public Works Department on schematic design documents and scope of work for this rehab. And the estimated maximum cost is $813,000. And that is the amount that we'd be submitting to the state. You'll also recall in our earlier discussions that for us to do this conversion, the department is going to need to repay home funds. And that amount, at this point, were we to do that today, would be a total of $777,582,000. That amount decreases as the months go by by about $6,700. So by the time we actually do this conversion, we anticipate it will probably be about $750,000. Were we to take that amount of money and the amount of money required to do the landscaping and hardscaping that we're proposing with the Public Works Agency, it would still be significantly less cost to the county than going out and building a new building or renovating another building. And those costs, we estimate to be between $3 and $4 million. So we still see this as the most cost-effective solution to get this very needed facility and service to our residents of Ventura County who need this level of care.
Thank you. Are there any questions? It is something that is very needed and something very much looking, we're looking forward to. Regarding the home funds, is there an opportunity to suggest an alternative use of those funds if we have another program in the county that instead of just returning them, but also suggesting that we can use them elsewhere?
You can, they would be returned and then they can be reallocated. And so the board makes a decision basically every year, what we have in the pot to reallocate, so.
So not necessarily will they be lost, but rather we might be able to transfer them?
Not necessarily lost, yes.
Thank you. Great. Well, if there are no other questions?
I have, just a second. Make some comments. This fills in a really critical hole for us in our continuum of service. And so I want to compliment Melanie and everybody on her staff, the Mental Health Board, and I know Supervisor Parks serves on that, for helping to pull this together. It's at the, you know, it's located close and it makes a lot of sense from that standpoint. And I'm really happy to see that the funding, that this, you know, that even with looking at the home funds and what we have to do there, it's still, this is the most cost-effective way to do this. We have that critical responsibility to provide these services to that population. We're very fortunate to have the Mental Health Services Act to be able to fill out a number of other places and to get this important hole filled is just really valuable. So congratulations, thank you.
And we really appreciated your support Supervisor Bennett, bringing that item forward and your support for the facility.
Thank you. And also as a kind of testimony to the Mental Health Board and the activists there who suggested this. And then also, great thanks to you, this is in your district and your assistance is greatly appreciated.
So it moves to recommended action.
And I'll go ahead and second that. And that is also a 4-0 approval. Next item on our agenda, then, is item number 32, which is the adoption of tax rates for fiscal year 2010, 2011. Is this yours Christine?
Yes, it is. Members of the Board, Marty Robinson, this is an annual resolution that you're required to pass for the voter-approved debt that gets added to the tax rolls. And if you have any questions, I can answer those.
Thank you. And we really don't have much.
No, it's based on the debt voter-approved debt.
Right, okay. Not too much leeway there. So with that, do we have a motion for item 32?
Sure.
Supervisor Bennett and second by Supervisor Zaragoza. And if we could please vote. Next item on our agenda then is, that does pass, is item 33. This is with the County Executive's Office. Good morning.
Good morning Chair Parks, Board Members. This is Robinson. My name is Harold Pierce. I'm Director of Benefits. I'd like to introduce Susan DeMille. She's our Manager of Benefits. Your approval is requested to change the flexible spending account employee contribution from '26 to '24 pay periods. This will conform the deduction to the tax calendar year. We're also recommending that the maximum contribution amount to the healthcare spending account be reduced in the future to comply with healthcare reform. Any questions?
It's going from '27 to '24, is that?
From '26 to '24.
'26 to '24.
Correct.
So it'll stay right in the same fiscal year?
Yes, it will.
And it's also a reduction in future from the $5,000 to $2,500, correct?
Correct.
Talk about making healthcare more expensive.
Thank you, said fiscal year, you meant calendar year.
Calendar year.
Calendar year.
The question was, would it stay the same?
Fiscal. Correct.
Calendar.
Calendar.
Thank you.
Okay. Make the motion to approve.
Okay.
No second.
There is a motion by Supervisor Foye, a second by Supervisor Zaragoza. And I was just wondering, do you see any impact in this regarding enrollment or any kind of impact to employees?
No, it's, it will impact from the standpoint of additional, a larger contribution based on '24 versus '26 because two pay periods per year, there would be no deductions for the, for the contribution.
Okay, thank you.
We currently have about 20% of our employees that are in our benefits program currently participating in a health and/or dependent care flex spending account. And with these changes, because we will be centralizing and having the same grace period in some other administrative aspects, we believe it will be easier to communicate and make it more attractive to employees. So we do hope we have an increase in enrollment.
That's positive.
I can ask, how many people in the, in the other 20% you talk about are doing over $2,500? Is there a good portion of people on the healthcare?
In the healthcare account, currently, the annual max is $5,000. And we have approximately 80 employees that contribute the maximum, which is about 10%.
Which is about typical. But you have others that are $3,000, $3,500.
All the way down to the minimum of $10.
$10 a pay period. That's too bad to see this changed because it's a pretty good hit for those people that were taking the $5,000, don't get the tax benefits of all that.
Correct.
Well, the one nice thing is if you have two county employees, they can each take $2,500 and still maintain the maximum if they're married.
Or they could get married.
And we do have those employees, right?
Oh, we have several, yes.
That can take the max.
And our clerk does the weddings.
Yeah. Mary Mark. Has there been any change in, in the rollover provision here? I mean, the way this was set up, if you don't spend the money within, it's something like 15 months.
If you don't spend it within the plan year, under the healthcare flex spending, a few years ago, we implemented the two-and-a-half-month grace period. Which allows you an additional two-and-a-half months after the plan year ends to actually incur in expenses beyond the plan year so that you can file claims and get the money out. It's reduced our forfeitures significantly.
But has there been any change as a result of federal legislation to that two-and-a-half-month period?
No, we get to continue that. That has not changed. Under healthcare reform and the Reconciliation Act, the only real impact that affects next plan year for the healthcare flex spending is we can no longer allow reimbursement or claim over-the-counter medications unless they're prescribed by a licensed medical provider.
And is the fact that you, if you don't spend it in the plan year or two-and-a-half months after the plan year, you lose it, is that a federal restriction or is that just our own county policy?
It's an IRS mandate to have a qualified Section 125 flex spending account in our cafeteria plan. So we are required to do that in order to have a qualified plan.
We're required to have a qualified plan. My question is, are we required to have a plan that causes you to lose the money if you don't spend it in that?
Yes, that's one of the criteria in order to develop a qualified.
You can't, you can't roll it over from year to year. A qualified plan doesn't allow you to do that.
Yeah, there's been, there's been a major push for years to try to get rid of the use it or lose it.
It would sure, it would sure encourage people much more if that was eliminated.
It's a tough, it's a test mandated by the IRS. I mean, the extension was, was good.
But the, yeah, but the Healthcare Reform Act did not modify that in spite of people wanting to do that. Thank you very much.
Good questions. All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Will we please vote? Thank you for explaining that. Next item on our agenda, then, we'll go on to item 33? 34 now.
Okay, now flexible benefit program. Your approval is requested for the 2011 flexible benefit plan. An RFP was conducted covering medical and dental. Four medical providers and eight dental carriers responded. After a thorough review with the Joint Labor Management Committee, it was concluded that Anthem, Blue Cross Dental, and Health Net offered the best programs. It is recommended that your board approve the proposed benefit plans and rates outlined in Exhibit 1. These plans include healthcare reform changes covering dependent medical, lifetime limits, over-the-counter drugs, and non-discrimination against children with pre-existing condition. Question?
We have a couple of questions. Go ahead Supervisor Zaragoza.
And the opt-out, you have 1,200 employees that are opted out from the, from the medical plans?
Pardon?
1,200 employees that have opted out from the, that's pretty significant, is that? And the opt-out dollars are collected to balance the rest of the plans? Is that, is that the way it works?
Correct. It's used to offset the premiums as well as paid-for programs like Wellness, Work Life, EAP.
So now I have to pay more money for that?
Correct.
Okay. It costs me more.
Harold, one of the things that I get a little concerned with is I see this different rate between our HMO and the other HMOs, you know, or the county one.
Correct.
It's, what are we doing to ensure that we have actuarially, I know you don't have to deal with that, sure that, you know, because you're, you're looking at Health Net, you know that actuary, their oversight and everything else. When you look at the difference in this rate, it's tremendous. I mean, as you know, there's probably most of this, you look at all these different carriers, there's probably a 10% difference in their rates when you look at all the quotes, right?
Correct.
And when you see a 45% difference, that concerns me. Are we, is the plan reserving enough? Is it doing all the right things and we have actual evidence of all that before we get ourselves in? Because the difference is, I'd rather see this rate be accurate and the county not have to subsidize if something happens. You know, because all the other carriers are required by, to have reserving and all the overhead and all their stuff, so.
Yeah, it gets a little tricky because we treat VCHCP like any other carrier. However, we have requested that they do a separate actuarial analysis to develop their rate. Now, our understanding is that they have done that over the last two years. Now, as the plan sponsor, me and my department really can't go beyond that. We don't ask Health Net and the other carriers to provide us with actuarial reports. So they give us a summary, give us a letter from the actuary saying that it was validated. Now, I understand the federal office is going to pursue it.
Okay. Because I think it's just important that we make sure, I mean, at the end of the day, we don't want to have a false number. John's here probably commenting on that.
I simply wanted to advise you that we can provide you with a copy of last year's actuarial. It takes a little time because they do a combined. They look at, we, as county employees, they also have to do an assessment of their patient load at the hospital. It's done by the same group. So we will get the full actuarial on which these rates are based in the second week of November. I will have that full amount. But as Harold points out, we treat them like any other insurer.
Right, I understand. As long as you're comfortable, I mean, because you know, with the healthcare reform, we also have this going from '23 to '26. We've got all those other things, all the carriers are added. There's some big numbers for some of that. And I'm just curious if we saw that. I'm sure Mike, you know, they're doing a fine job. I just want to make sure that we don't get stuck at the end and all of a sudden, we got a two or three or four or five million dollar subsidy the county's got to put into that now.
We actually get a great benefit out of the fact that they are increasing their membership. We have quality healthcare. We provide quality healthcare. So you'll see, and this year especially, you will see another transition of people toward the Ventura County Healthcare Plan.
Well, at these rates, I can see why. And everybody I know that chooses it is quality.
You'll send the people you love and care about to that facility.
Yeah, no question.
Yes Supervisor Zaragoza?
John, I just want to say, you know, the, the rate here for, for the highest HMO compared to the Ventura County, it's just double. I mean, our rates are just excellent. To maintain that kind of rate, it's just absolutely.
If we can do it, it's great. I just don't want to get in a position that.
But you see, are we falling behind because we're not putting enough?
Well, I just don't want to be in a position that all of a sudden, we're not doing all the things, reserving all the requirements. But I know, I've talked with Mike for, and they're working, I just want to make sure that we, as a county, have looked at this. Because there used to be, years ago, when you used to have the collective plans and all of a sudden, they'd be half the rates and, you know, within two years, they're out of business and all the problems that we have, so.
We have enough money for the future, isn't it?
Yeah, exactly.
We're quite comfortable. They've got a durable business model with what they give us.
Supervisor Bennett?
I just want to say, legitimate question that Supervisor Foye is bringing. I, I just want to say, legitimate question that Supervisor Foy is bringing up, and I think it's one we should always, you know, consistently ask each year as, as this comes around. I sit on the Ventura County Healthcare Plan, and, you know, try to go over those numbers as carefully as possible. They're not the actuarial numbers, they're just the numbers for the plan. The plan certainly is healthy on an annual basis in terms of reserves are growing, et cetera, so there's not any evidence there. The actuarial is also, you know, a separate thing that we need to look at, and I'll look forward to seeing that in November when it comes in. Legitimate issue to bring up. Legitimate issue to bring up, and, uh, one we should constantly keep our eye on. But I think it, the, the other thing I would point out is, in my mind, I think it speaks to the fact that although people talk about the private sector always being more efficient, that this, this may be one area where the public can provide this service more cost-effectively for a variety of reasons. But one of them is, you don't have all the, you know, you don't have all the cost of the profit for the health insurance company itself, that's, you know, fifteen to twenty-five percent markup in there. We don't have to do that here with our plan, because we don't have to try to have it. So, I, I think that's, I'd like to point out, as everybody saw this, that, that this may say something about healthcare reform and what may be the model that we should be following for the whole country down the road. But, um, thank you.
That our facilities can, can do it less costly than the private insurance companies can.
Partially because you're taking out all that administrative overhead for the insurance company.
I'm looking at the, the rate of growth in this proposal. It's twice as much increase for those who are opting out, and some of those who opt out really haven't much choice. If they have a family that doesn't all live within close distance to the Ventura County facilities, and they really can't use that plan. And to see that they're paying twice as much in increase than a couple of these other plans is, is a difficult one. I'd like to see a chart that shows the percentage growth in the different ones over the years. You know, is one growing a lot faster than the other, and is it equitable, that's where I'm coming from.
And while you're doing that, we, we've, we've come up with this before. I just want to confirm, this rate was done using the formula that we've applied every year, right?
Correct.
Mr. Bennett is taking us through our paces, so we did a four-hour session.
You get the feeling that somebody's cooking the books on this one, and, but when you, when you, when you actually go through it, there's a complicated formula, and, and it's been applied consistently in the formula, and after I went through it, I couldn't question the formula, so.
Has the other providers?
But I'm questioning the results of the formula. So, I would like to be able to see that historically, to see if.
Happy to do it.
We use the same formula for everybody.
Correct.
Great. So, with this, I have one speaker card, and that's AC Carvah, if you'd like to come up.
Good morning, Board. This is Marty Robinson. My name is AC. I'm here on behalf of nearly five thousand county employees who are members of the SEIU seven twenty-one. I know that today's motion is just a formality for adopting a new medical insurance rate, and the county does not have much control over them. Even with the recent healthcare legislation, it will be sometime before the healthcare costs are managed. But until then, I am concerned about SEIU-represented employees. The vast majority of their workers are part of Ventura County Medical Plan, and they will now be hit with another three hundred and sixty dollars pay cut. This is in addition to the three percent paycheck cut that workers started taking in July. As you can see, our paychecks are eroding, and for a single parent, this additional cost is certainly going to impact them even more. We understand that the budget is tight, but it does seem that an undue burden is continually placed on the most vulnerable, lowest-paid workers. Thank you, have a nice day.
Thank you, and it is, it is an increase for everyone. It's a difficult time. With that, then, we have a motion by Supervisor Foye, and a second by Supervisor Bennett. Would we all please vote? And that also passes, of course, zero. And our next item then on the agenda, this item number thirty-five, this is our IT department, with, I think, some good news.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All of Board members, Chairman Park, or Chair Person Parks, and Ms. Robinson. We have been asked to come before the Board to discuss and answer questions on a service and rate that we're proposing for the county, which wraps around a service called Unified Fax. We've developed this as a recent service offering, and in, in the process of developing it, are now asking the Board to approve a rate structure so that we can begin to provide this service to the county. Before I go any further, I'd just simply like to ask, do you have questions? Would you like me to give you a brief history about how we came about this? How would you like me to proceed?
I would like the brief history.
Okay. We began to develop this service under the direction of our CEO, Richard Jackson, and with significant assistance from our network, our manager of network services, Albert Feliciano, who did most of the technical review and research on this. It actually came from a, an SEC meeting, where I believe the auditor controller, or someone in that office, recommended that we look at providing this service for the county as both a convenience and a cost containment exercise. So, taking that as direction, we began to research the various resources and providers of the service. We looked at about ten, we narrowed it down to two. We found one that would interface with our environment, provide the future functionality we were looking for, and we started to, a test with designated users. It's actually called a UAT, or User Acceptance Testing Program. Through that UAT, we uncovered a number of ways that people faxed, and began to look at providing this as a centralized service. Unified Fax in of itself is a centralized server that sits on our network, and it runs by telephone number, and it interfaces with our email accounts. So, we have a scenario where we can provide a fax number to anyone in the county, either on a shared or individual basis. We then provide access to the centralized fax server, both going in and going out. It's kind of multiple points coming in to a central server, multiple points going out. Right now, if you look at the cost model for faxing, people pay about thirty bucks a month, which is the per charge for connecting into a fax, and we've reduced that down to five, five dollars a month. And actually, this is what we bill the end-users, so actually we're taking our rates and lowering them for this particular service, and making it more convenient and more cost-effective for us to send and receive faxes in general. We did the initial cost analysis on a number we pulled out of that month with, which was thirteen hundred, roughly thirteen hundred faxes a day. As we've looked at this over time, we actually do about twenty-one hundred faxes a day. So, based on the amount of activity we see, combined with the fact that it doesn't look like our, our faxing is going down, and when you think about the amount of legal work that we do, the amount of medical work that we do, those are industries, or those are areas that generate a lot of faxing, so I, I don't see this backing off anytime real soon. So, that's kind of how we came to, to be in this scenario, and we're very pleased to be offering this service, and feel it will be an excellent solution to help drive our costs down, map better to a green initiative, because now we're not using ink and paper and, and, and machines. It would map to the enterprise contact management resolution that we're trying to push forward on, because now our documents are coming in in a, you know, soft format, not, they're not, not in a hard format, so they're all already prepared as they arrive to be entered into an ECM solution. So, you know, it works on a number of different levels, and as I said, we're very pleased to be able to offer this service.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
So, you actually get rid of the machine, is that what it is?
You can.
And then use the computer to?
Uh, yes. Your faxing now goes through your desktop. It doesn't necessarily go through a machine.
And that is intra, or, or for everybody?
It's for everybody in the county.
In the county?
We can assign, for example, we can assign one fax number to an entire agency. They can all share it. Five dollars, two faxes for the entire agency. We can assign it in work groups, where if you want this group to have their own fax number, and this group, and it'll be delivered directly to their mailbox. Or we can do it one at a time. We can assign a fax mailbox, that's five dollars a month, to each member of the Board of Supervisors, and you can have your own private fax.
So, you have a fax come in from outside, and it comes into the computer like an email?
Correct.
And then to respond to that individual, or to that?
Just the reverse.
Same, the reverse.
Yeah, you can generate the email attached documents. If you need to bring documents in, you can either scan them in or fax them in, but, yes, you're correct, that's exactly what I'm.
You mentioned the savings of paper and, and cartridges and so forth, all to the machines.
Mm-hmm. And we worked it out, we looked at industry standards. Industry standard comes in at about two dollars and fifty-six cents per fax. That's what the industry says, that's what we figured it out to be, and we include labor in there as well. So, it's, it's a soft ROI, not necessarily a hard ROI. After we're complete with this solution, we pride, we take our cost per fax down to sixty cents a fax. So, you know, that's two dollars and ten cents per fax, given that the fact that we do about twenty-one hundred faxes a day. In soft ROI, it's a significant return. When we did the board letter, we simply looked at it, just to keep it realistic, and then that, because soft ROI doesn't always directly drop down to the bottom line. There are some labor savings in there, and labor very often gets, you know, they just simply do something else. But if you look at the difference between thirty dollars for a port and five dollars for a port, again, even on the hard savings, it's significant on a per.
And the two-dollar assumptions down to sixty cents is a tremendous savings.
That's correct. Our only risk now is adoption, so, you know, we are definitely looking for assistance in pushing this solution forward. We have some plans to publicize it and make it available. We'll be following up on it as soon as we receive the endorsement and approval from the Board, and then go forth and finish off the application. We have been waiting for this before we basically pulled the trigger to fully deploy this.
How long, how long would it take to implement at countywide?
Uh, about two weeks, you think? Two, three weeks.
Okay. So, it might be appropriate for us to ask for a report from the CEO's office for who has not converted over six months from now, you know what I mean? I think that would make, I think that'd be appropriate, and that might be some helpful motivation, find out why somebody's not converted over. Because it doesn't, it doesn't make sense for us to keep this old antiquated fax.
I think you're right. We've done this in my other office a couple of years back, and it's, get to the point where you don't, hopefully, we get all of our documents, you know, everything is scanned in, everything else. You don't have to leave your desk to do anything. It really is a time saver. I can't, hopefully, everybody jump on. I mean, some of them like change, but you can just, boom, it's there. Hopefully, it'll work out that our Blackberry, and I guess be able to open some of those fax documents, but.
It is possible.
Yeah, so I mean, it's gonna be great. This is a real time saver. I think there's a lot more to it, because when people get up and do faxes, they're going down, they're talking to a lot of people. I think it's a lot more time savings than that we're gonna, we're gonna see. So, I think it's gonna be tremendous, and if you're looking to be green, this is a way to be green, no question.
Quick, quick question I have. What, what do we do if somebody does not have a scanner? They've, they've got a piece of paper that's not in their computer, they don't have a scanner at their, at their site?
There's really three things that can happen. One is, most of the printers we have have the ability to scan in electronic documents, so you can take that avenue. The other is simply purchase a scanner. It's, you know, it, it doesn't generate the consumables that a fax machine does. The other is to use a fax machine, if you have one, and you don't want to get rid of it, and it's already paid for, you can actually fax the, the device into your mailbox, per se, and then that document is converted over.
Okay. So, that's compatible to the scan?
That's correct. It's all operated by, it's actually a telephone number and an email combined, and the, the technology is called Computer Telephony Interface. It's also a component of Unified Communication, something we're also working on very hard to bring to the county, and we simply see this as a first step as we continue to try to find solutions that make sense for the employees and the agencies in general.
I think it's an excellent solution.
Can I ask, Rick, can I ask you a question too, while you're here? I mean, while we're on this topic, I just want to ask, I know, I heard the other day on the radio that somebody, was it, but, oh, it was, so many employees were going to iPhones that they could no longer make the requirement that everybody had to be BlackBerry oriented. How about us and Groupwise, and where are we, and, and all of that? Are we gonna be staying with BlackBerry as the phone is gonna be compatible with the Groupwise, or is there gonna be a change down the road, or?
The major change is, I believe, this month, that Groupwise Novell has provided us with an application that will support the iPhones and the other Androids and those types of phones. And as we continue our study towards, moving toward the possibility of Microsoft being our email solution, that that automatically is an interface.
So, when would we make that kind of conversion, if?
We were, are going to install a software and do the testing, I believe, this month. I will follow up, but I believe that's where we're standing.
Thank you very much.
Also, I know we didn't recognize, but Larry Pitlack's here in the studio, in the conference room today, and Larry was the individual who suggested that we look at centralized faxing, so we want to give him notoriety of his excellence, his thought process, his ingenuity of saying, you know, there's a better way to do things.
If I can have a moment to introduce Larry Pitlack. Larry, come on up here, please. Larry is the recipient of the STAR Award Program that your Board approved many years ago, and the County Admin Manual describes the program. It's my first time to have this honor and pleasure to use that STAR Award Program to recognize Mr. Pitlack for his service here for the ongoing savings to the county, and I do not have a check to present to him. I'm saving paper and printer ink by adding it to his paycheck, but I would like to give Larry an opportunity to address your Board with any comments he might have. He has worked on this type of approach in another location, and so this idea was very timely. Thank you.
I'd like to say thank you to all of you for the opportunity. Thank you for all, for the opportunity to work for the County of Ventura and be able to provide my past experiences to what might be applicable to uses in the County of Ventura, and provide any savings that we can here. I enjoy working here in the Auditor Controller's Office and participating with the other agencies for the benefit of the entire county, and I'd just like to say thank you.
Do you got some other ideas out there that we're gonna be coming up? All right, good.
Thank you very much, and it's, it's great to see that rise to the top and save the taxpayers, too. So, with that, do we have a motion?
I also think it's, Supervisor Bennett said, we gotta, in a sense, hold people accountable in six months, but everybody's gotta jump on this, because at the end of the day, when this technology really takes, their jobs are gonna be much more effective, more fun, and everything else. It's gonna be just much easier to do, and they can focus on what they do instead of all the peripheral, trying to get this paper and do all that. So, I'm, I'm excited what you guys are all accomplishing, and thank you very much for the ideas.
And I think we, I think we ought to say this, if you can't make this change, you got a real, you got a real problem with change, you know? I mean, this is, this is not the big, the big change that we, that we need out there.
I think it also helps as people from the outside, private sector come in, and they've been doing these things, oh, the county's doing that, too. That's great to see, and, you know, we're not so far behind, so that's good.
This is a well-documented, heavily deployed solution, so we're certainly not out on the bleeding ass.
No, that's true.
Madam Church, I also want to thank you. The county's way ahead in technology, too, you know, and with the iPads and the, all the goodies that you give us, you know, are excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tools. Not goodies, but tools.
We also want to recognize that it's Dan and his team that brought the wireless to the boardroom today, so.
So, we now have wireless access. Thank you.
And we have a motion by Supervisor Bennett. I'll go ahead and second that for expediency. Oh, we did. Great. And we voted on everything. Excellent. Way to go. And at that, we are gonna move on to our correspondence agenda. Do we have a motion for that? That's the motion, and a second. And that passes also. And I do believe we have zipped through our agenda, and we, our next item is our ten AM, and since we've got fifteen minutes or so, is that enough time to go into closed session, make some major decisions, and come back? Okay, then we're going to recess to our closed session, be back out. Okay, then we're going to recess to our closed session, be back out here at 10:00 AM sharp for our time certance. We're back in session now, and from our closed session, which we're gonna go back to, and we're gonna go to our first 10:00 AM time certance, and that's item 23, and that's the National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month, and I believe Supervisor Bennett is going to be presenting this resolution.
Thank you very much. Pleasure to present this. I'd like to ask Melanie and Patrick to come up, and they will help with this resolution, and we have a number of people, staff, and, and others that are here for this resolution. I'd like to just take a moment to read this resolution. It's a resolution, the Board of Supervisors proclaiming September 2010 National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month, whereas in twenty, whereas in 2008, an estimated twenty-three million people of every age, race, ethnicity, and socioeconomic status needed treatment for substance dependence or abuse in the United States. That's a remarkable number, twenty-three million in 2008, all right, needed treatment. Nearly seven million persons aged twelve to twenty reported binge drinking of alcohol in the past month, and 2.4 million reported as heavy drinkers. Recovery from substance abuse, use disorders is possible through a variety of treatment resources and recovery support programs. That for each dollar spent on drug treatment, seven dollars is saved in our system, and thousands of people across the United States are living happy, healthy, and productive lives in recovery. And it's essential to educate our county about how substance use disorders affect all people in the community, including youth, the workforce, older adults, and families, and that the negative impact presents a public safety concern. And in order to combat misconceptions associated with addiction, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors proclaim September 2010 as National Drug Addiction Recovery Month. And I just would like to point out, while we may have all kinds of perceptions of people who have become addicted, certainly for their, for the family members that are affected by people that are abusing drugs or alcohol, for them alone, it is important for us to be able to have good recovery programs to try to save all of those other people that are affected from the impact besides the person themselves. So I'd like to turn it over to Melanie and Patrick and bring this down.
Good morning, Supervisor Parks and members of the board, and Mr. Carroll. Thank you very much for this proclamation today. September is National Alcohol and Drug Recovery Month, and this gives us a time to recognize the work and progress made towards substance abuse treatment and recovery. The Substance Abuse Mental Health Services Administration, SAMSA, has for twenty years worked to educate the public about addiction and recovery issues, and Recovery Happens is one of those strategies through which they do that. I was at CMHDA last week, and another statistic came out, came to my attention that was really alarming. We've talked about a twenty-five-year less life expectancy for people who have serious mental illness, and the data is a thirty-five-year less life expectancy for people with serious addictions and mental health issues co-occurring. So that certainly makes these issues top priorities in terms of health issues. This year, we're really stressing the fact that we've got returning veterans, we've got people who have experienced economic stress. I think the society is just fast and stressful, just in, in general, and of course, that contributes to people falling into addiction issues, and so we're going to emphasize that this year in our Recovery Happens Conference. Just wanted to just quickly say, we've got staff here, we've got people from the Alcohol and Drug Board, we've got some providers here, we've got somebody from Straight Up, they do the reality parties, and of course, our law enforcement partners in the back, we really appreciate their support ongoing, and we really appreciate your support and hope you can attend our conference.
Thank you, Supervisor Bennett, for that, and our appreciation to the volunteers, too, that are putting in the effort and helping us on our Drug and Alcohol Advisory Board. Our next item on our agenda...
Supervisor Parks, I saw, I just saw Rosa with the camera as I was coming back here and stuff. How about a picture, and anybody that you want to have in that picture, real quick?
You get the whole group down here.
Two pictures, the count three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
All right. Thank you for that, Supervisor Bennett, and thank you for staff, too. Good work you're doing. Our next item on our agenda is honoring a very special person who has really had his impact, an impact to many people throughout the East Ventura County, and that is Officer Randy Hosking with the California Highway Patrol. And he has made such an impact that I can see that many members of the municipal advisory councils that he was the liaison to are here today because they think of him as specialy as I do, and as well as members of my staff who are very much appreciative of this wonderful individual. And I have this resolution, and I see that he's here in the audience, I know that there are other people who want to come and speak, but I think I'll start by, if you come down here, Randy, I'll come down there, too, and we can read, I'll read the resolution, and Thank you so much, everybody. I know you don't do this for the recognition, but you're an individual that it's so obvious just loves his job, and his, love for his job emanated throughout the work that he did, and, and really got a lot of great partnerships going, and a lot of appreciation for what you do, and as well as very much my appreciation for what you've done with other citizens and helping the citizens throughout Ventura County. So this resolution reads, "Our resolution of the Board of Supervisors of Ventura County honors Officer Randy Hosking, California Highway Patrol. Whereas Officer Randy Hosking is an accomplished and dedicated fifteen-year veteran of the California Highway Patrol, whose work has greatly enhanced Ventura County's confidence in the superior service provided by our law enforcement. And whereas throughout his career with the CHP, Officer Randy Hosking has supported the mission and objectives set forth by the California Highway Patrol, and in doing so earned the gratitude and respect of Ventura County residents. And whereas Officer Randy Hosking has served with special distinction in East Ventura County since he originated the position of Community Liaison Officer in 2005, working closely with the residents in the municipal advisory councils of the Santa Rosa Valley and Oak Park to safeguard and to advance the common good. And whereas Officer Randy Hosking is particularly admired for his professionalism and steadfast support that he has provided throughout the implementation of the Traffic Light Synchronization program on Santa Rosa Road, and for greatly increasing traffic safety in the east county through his outstanding patrol efforts. And whereas along the highways and byways of Supervisor Linda Parks, District Two, and of Supervisor Peter Seifoy's, District Four, Officer Randy Hosking is familiar to all as the exquisitely skilled CHP motorcycle officer with a friendly spirit, and whereas, I mean, if he gives you a ticket, you say, "Thank you." Whereas Officer Randy Hosking, thank you. Officer Randy Hosking has further enriched our role through his children, Amanda and Bradley, and now therefore be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in honoring and thanking California Highway Patrol Officer Randy Hosking for his outstanding dedication to serving the residents of Ventura County. Thank you so much."
Thank you very much.
I know that there are a few people who want to get a picture. Great. You're a star.
Thank you very much.
And you stay up here, and I know that there are others who have submitted cards, and I also be Captain Harris here with the Harris Department. Mark, do you want to go first?
Actually, I'd like to go first.
Okay.
Rosemary's coming on the way.
All right. We have Mike Green, and he's with the Oak Park Municipal Advisory Council, and Mike, come on up, and I'll go back where I am.
Hi, I'm Mike Green, I'm chairman of the Oak Park MAC, and I'd just like to say a few more words about Randy, I mean, Linda said quite a bit, but for us in Oak Park, Officer Hosking has always been there for us, over and above normal duty, he's been there for us on the cell phone, email, any kind of problems we have, he's been helpful in taking care of them for us, especially very helpful in school problems that we've had, because we have a lot of traffic problems around our schools in Oak Park, and he's been there. But most important, he's always been there at our MAC meetings, and many times, the issue that maybe he was involved in, such as the traffic thing, unfortunately, was at the end of the agenda, and he has sat there dutifully through many boring MAC meetings, waiting for his opportunity to give us some input. We really appreciate that. And I just want to, we have a little plaque for you, and I will read off of the plaque. It says, "Officer Randy Hosking, California Highway Patrol, with sincere appreciation and gratitude for your dedication and tireless efforts on behalf of the residents of Oak Park. The Oak Park MAC, September fourteenth, two thousand and ten."
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, and Mike, if you'd fill out one of those blue, you did, okay, you've got him on there. Okay, great. Thank you so much, Mike, and I, I believe we now have Mark Burley representing the Santa Rosa Valley Municipal Advisory Council.
Yes, I'd just like to say, first of all, Rosemarie Allison, our chair, is on her way, I think she may have been pulled over for speeding on the freeway by the CHP, so she's got a little plaque for Officer Hosking, too, but Officer Hosking has been incredible in dealing with the numbers of issues that we have had with, to do with Santa Rosa Road, and as you're all familiar, we've had a huge amount of issues over the years to do with the safety on that road, and Officer Hosking was with us before we were able to get the synchronized traffic signals put in, and he was very helpful coming to all of the MAC meetings each month, telling us about what the safety issues were on Santa Rosa Road each month, giving us an update on those, and then giving us advice on ways to help deal with that. And during the implementation of the traffic signal system, he came back and gave us feedback on what was going on, so that has made Santa Rosa Road a much safer place, and the community is extremely appreciative of the work that Officer Hosking has done in helping and the feedback that he's given. So I would like to thank him very much for that, and if, as soon as the chairman, our chair, Rosemarie Allison, has paid her speeding ticket, she will be here, and we will give him the plaque. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Not only providing wonderful advice, but also taking a lot of advice from the MAC members, too, very well. Almost like, where should you put your radar gun? Randy, would, would you like to speak, or is anyone else? If you'd like to make some comments, or not, it's up to you.
Well, thank you very much. I'm very, very honored to receive these awards. I was not expecting so much today. The nice words that everybody's shared with me, it's very nice to be appreciated like that, and I do enjoy working the unincorporated areas, and I know the California Highway Patrol takes pride, and Cliff is no exception in taking pride in the unincorporated communities that we serve. And when Cliff appointed me five years ago, a little over five years ago now, I had no idea what I was in for, but I knew I was up for the challenge, and a new challenge, and I really enjoy working and serving the people in the community, and I look forward to continuing to do so in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Randy, let me just say that when I came in and we had our meetings around the different areas, you were tremendous, but I, what you do and for the community's great, but I think you just are a perfect example of representation with the high patrols, high standards they want to put forth, so tremendous, and thank you so much for what you've done.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you very much. Definitely the epitome of a wonderful officer and CHP, has always been very friendly, helpful, and I know, and we have his captain here, and I do believe he'll be coming forward with our, our next agenda item, which is item number twenty-five, and this is introduction of our new CHP commander for Ventura, as well as providing some update on our quarterly activities. Welcome.
Hi, I'll let him go first.
I can see why.
Yeah, that's a tough act to follow. Randy obviously is an excellent representation of the California Highway Patrol, and I couldn't be prouder to be standing here and seeing him get that recognition that you guys just gave him, so. I am the new commander, I'm Bob Galeri. I come by way of Sacramento. My wife and family has brought me down to your beautiful Ventura County, and I couldn't be more pleased about that. If the weather stays like it is today, every day, I'm, I'm gonna love it even more. But my family is really, really enjoying being here. I have a son that's fifteen years old and a, and a daughter that's twenty-one. I have five other girls that are grown and out of the house and still in Sacramento, and they're missing us. However, this is where my wife wanted to retire, and she just retired from the state, and I couldn't be more pleased to be your commander here in Ventura County. I didn't have a formal presentation of any sort for the quarterly reports, because I'm still getting my feet wet, just finished off my first month. I can tell you what I've seen, I'm very, very pleased of the men and women that work in the Ventura office. They're very, very dedicated and committed professionals. I'm looking forward to working with each and every one of you and all the traffic safety partners in the area to provide the highest level of safety, service, and security to the citizens of Ventura County. I'd like to give you all of my, a card, a business card, and feel free to contact me with any concerns that you have regarding traffic safety issues. I'd like to address those at the highest level and get to those as, as soon as I can, and assist you guys with your traffic safety concerns. So with that, I'd like to give the cards to the clerk, and, and she can pass those to you guys. Looking forward to a great working relationship with every one of you.
Representing Ventura and Ojai and parts of Oxnard, I want to welcome you to...
That's correct.
And I don't want to welcome you to...
Well, thank you.
I was saying, I represent Ojai, Ventura, and parts of Oxnard. Supervisor Zergos, and the rest of Oxnard.
El Rio, and Nila, Neches, and Port Alonzo, and thank you for your good work.
So, welcome, welcome to Ventura County. Welcome to the work of the...
Thank you.
I'd say welcome to you, too, and we've had a great relationship with the Highway Patrol, and, but I want to ask you a question. There's this guy who became our clerk recorder. You know this guy named Lund?
We're in.
Oh, Mark Lund? Yeah, yeah, we all know Mark.
Okay. You don't have to tell the stories, but anyway, congratulations and thanks. You, you moved to God's country.
Yeah, it is. It's heaven here.
It is, that's right.
It really is. You guys are really, really lucky. It's like a hundred degrees in Sacramento.
Down to sixty-eight.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then Captain Williams, you have, you can give us the update and...
Yes.
Activities.
And good morning, supervisors, and hello, Mr. Carroll. I want to thank you, first of all, very much for that great resolution that you presented to Officer Randy Hosking. He is deserving, and he's really set the standard for other officers working within our communities, and for the Moore Park area, we do cover ten unincorporated communities, and Officer Hosking started out as a one-man army, and we picked up one additional office... And Officer Hosking started out as a one-man army, and we picked up one additional officer who has since promoted to Sergeant. And now we have Officer Steve Hunsacker in the interim, doing that same job as Randy, and he's doing an outstanding job, and very available and approachable to the public. Now, before I say anything else, because as I get older, I tend to forget, I want to introduce my boss, who is sitting in the back of the room. Wave your hand, that's Chief Scott Howland, who's down from our San Luis Obispo office. That's where our Coastal Division headquarters are located. So I'm glad to see him making it down here.
And he just came for Randy's benefit. He's not watching over us.[641.12][641.12](laughter)
Well, there's good news for the California Highway Patrol locally and across the state. We've just crossed a very major threshold. We dropped below 1.0 on the mileage death rate. The mileage death rate is the number of deaths per every 100 million miles traveled, and it's a very significant achievement. Thus far in 2010, statewide fatalities and injury accidents have dropped quite a bit. Our fatal accidents have dropped by 20%, but I'm very proud to report, through the good work of the Moore Park CHP officers, our mileage fatality, not mileage, but our fatality rate has dropped by 60% year-to-date compared to last year. Last year, we had our best year ever with nine fatalities by the end of the year. And I know for families, that's nine too many. But thus far this year, in 2010, we've only suffered two traffic fatalities within our jurisdiction, none of which have occurred on the freeway. They've been on county roads. One of them has been, was an intoxicated driver. So we're continuing to stay with our plan of vigorous enforcement, a very high visibility, responsive service to our local communities, and we have an aggressive public information campaign. Because part of our job isn't taking enforcement action, but it's trying to head the problem off in advance. So the CHP in both Moore Park and Ventura have the Start Smart program, and we would appreciate your support if you hear about those programs coming up and recommending to our young people to show up, because young people are involved in a disproportionate number of crashes. And with that, that's our update. I hope to visit you at the end of the year and come in with very good news about our year-end totals. And I know I'll see you all again next month when we meet in Supervisor Foy's district. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Rosemarie, you're here.
We did the plaque.
Okay, okay. He's been marked.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Cliff, that's great news, 60% reduction. That's tremendous.
Excellent.
And like I said, the families that are affected by those, it's tremendous. But on the other side, when you appointed Randy, you pat yourself on the back, huh? Did a good job.
Yeah, well, I was lucky. You know, he was the perfect officer, and he went well beyond the call of duty and with his hours. He really showed his dedication to our local communities, and I'm, you know, I saw the fruition of that today. So I'm also very grateful that he received that recognition. Thank you very much.
Really from a grateful community. And I hope to get a photo of everyone with Randy. Do you think we can still do that? We have another minute or so before our 10:30, if we can do that.
Yes, if he's still out--
You might, it might be better for you to go outside if you want to do this.
Okay. Well, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for coming all the way from San Luis Obispo. Also God's country, isn't it?[851.12][851.12](laughter)
From Ventura County.
Yeah, nice meeting all of you.
Thank you so much.
Here they are. They're coming. Here he is. Here he is.
All right, and we'll now move on to our next agenda item, and this is agenda item number 26. And this is recognition of the United Way. And I'll pass it over to Supervisor Zaragoza to present the resolution.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to invite Dave and our Chair up to the front, and I know we have some other board members. So what I have here is a resolution recognizing September 2010 as Live United Month, in recognition of 65 years anniversary of United Way of Ventura County. And I'm going to read this, and I'll go down, Dave and our Chairman, to present this to you. The Ventura County Board of Supervisors has declared September as Live United Month. And whereas Live United Month is intended to highlight for Ventura County residents the various programs and services provided by United Way of Ventura County that are designated to advance the common good of our community. And whereas United Way of Ventura County started at the War Chest of Ventura County in 1945, and has been the integral supporter of health and human services needs of our community for 65 years. And whereas United Way of Ventura County is focused today on providing support, community impact partnerships that are delivering results in critical programs that include 211 of Ventura County, volunteerventuracounty.org, the Earn Income Tax Credit Program, the United Women's Leadership Council, the Young Leaders Society, and the Latino Action Team, and more. Whereas United Way of Ventura County is focused on three key issues: education, income, and health, with success in the future to be measured through results that deliver positive community impact to more Ventura County residents in need. And whereas United Way of Ventura County has evolved over the last 65 years from the War Chest of Ventura County to the United Fund, to United Way of Ventura County, always with the purpose of improving lives and mobilizing and carrying power of our community. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors designates the month of September from this date forward to be Live United Month in Ventura County. Let it also be resolved that Ventura County Board of Supervisors reaffirms to the recognition of the social service needs of Ventura County residents and applauds United Way of Ventura County for the multiple ways the organization responds to those needs every day of the year, and is done for the last 65 years of this county. And this is presented to United Way on the 16th day of September. And I'd also like to share that Paul Grossko and Jeff Pratt, also from our agencies here in Ventura County, are going to kick off the United Way campaign in October. And Paul is back there, and Mr. Grossko's here, too. So anyway, I'd like to go down, and Dave and our Chairman, if you'd like to say a couple of words, and I'll present this to you. And we have some other board members there, too. And Michael Powers was our past Chair, too. So I'm going to go down to present this to you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Mr. Carroll, good to see you all today, and thank you so much for letting us spend a couple of minutes with you this morning. This is the 65th anniversary of United Way of Ventura County. It seems like a long time. It is a long time. It's a long time of, a lot of years of providing service in the community. I was trying to do some math the other day on what this means in terms of dollars allocated in support of services in the community over the years. It's millions of dollars that have been raised through the support of United Way and its partners in the community to support social service needs in the community. We are delighted to receive this proclamation today. We think it's particularly significant that you would see fit to show support for a United Way organization that has been so important to this community for so many years. I think it sends a powerful message to the community to have the support through this proclamation from the Board of Supervisors. I'd like to introduce the Chair of the United Way Board, Madeline Hess. I'm sure she has a few words she'd like to share with you, and then we have some other people we'd like to introduce to you also. Madeline?
Thank you. And also, thank you all for giving us this honor and proclaiming September as United Way Month. And I'd like to invite you all to our Day of Caring, September 25th. Great volunteer opportunity for every one of us in Ventura County. Family, friends, colleagues, anyone you can think of. Go on our website, there's some wonderful opportunities. And guess what? You get a coveted United Way T-shirt. Very coveted. And thank you again so much.
Sure. If you could, I'll start from the left. Amy Fonzo is our Vice President of Resource Development. Eve Liebman is our Campaign Division Director, who oversees the county campaign each year. Ron Golden is a past Board Chair of the United Way, who's actually going to be the recipient of the Milton M. Teague Award on Thursday at our annual Spirit of Community Partnership luncheon. Adam Tonell is the Chair-elect of the United Way Board, so he'll be Chair a year from now. Mike Powers is the immediate past Chair of the Board and still a member of the Board. Susan England is our Vice President for Community Impact, and Latisha Austin is our Director of Communications and Marketing. And pleased to have all of them with us today. Would you like to come up?
Does anybody want to say anything, too, or any other words? Or are we going to take a photo? And also want to thank United Way, because I'm a United Way member representing Ventura County Board of Supervisors. It's an honor to give you this. May I take photos?
Thank you. It's all good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you for the good work you do.
And--
You want to go on with your next item, too?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you. And I have another resolution that I'd like to share with the public today. And this is a resolution honoring Deborah Linehan. Deborah, you want to come up here? Deborah, you know, has worked for nine and a half years for the Gold Coast Transit. And whereas Deborah Linehan served the public as a transit manager or executive for the past 28 years, managing programs in Arizona, Vermont, and California. And whereas Ms. Linehan began her career managing a Red Cross Paratransit program in Arizona, and she moved up through the ranks to become the General Manager of the Chichen County--
Chittenden.
Chittenden County, it's pretty close. Transportation Authority in Burlington, Vermont. And whereas the Arizona Transit Association named Deborah the Transit Individual of the Year 1991. And Ms. Linehan began her recognition and other awards, also recognized other awards from organizations in Vermont and Arizona. Whereas Ms. Linehan began her work as General Manager for Gold Coast, or, excuse me, South Coast Transit, SCAT, on February 5, 2001, and continued as General Manager with the same name, with that agency named changed to Gold Coast in 2007. And whereas Ms. Linehan, tenure as General Manager of the Gold Coast, has been in a time of stability, in a time of progress, where they provided alternative fuel vehicles, meeting their quality standards, good financial management, excellent customer service, outstanding outreach to the community, and she has been an instrumental part in the success of Gold Coast Transit over the last nine and a half years. Whereas Deborah has worked effectively in collaborative manner with employees and also with the officials of Ventura County. Whereas Deborah will be leaving Gold Coast in October, and she'll be greatly missed. Whereas Ms. Linehan's career has been dedicated to public service, managing transit programs with great benefits to seniors, citizens, people with disabilities, families with limited incomes, and the county of Ventura commends you, Deborah, for your dedicated and many, many years of public service. Now therefore, let it be resolved that Ventura County Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in honoring Deborah Linehan for nine and a half years of dedicated service to Gold Coast Transit and the residents of Western Ventura County, and wishes her lots of success and good health and happiness in the future. And I'm currently the Chair of Gold Coast, and I've been an honor and a pleasure of working with Deborah. When I was with the Oxnard City Council, I had the opportunity to see her from the dais and not really work with her personally on a personal basis, but she really has done an outstanding job for the Western Transit, Gold Coast. And so we want to thank you. If you have anything that you want to share, and I'll go down and give you this resolution.
Thank you so much, Chair Parks, Supervisors Zaragoza, and members of the board, Mr. Carroll. This resolution is one of the most beautifully written, detailed honors I've ever received. I'm honored that you would just take the time, given what you have on your plate these days, to recognize me for my work here. And it has been a delight. You may notice I've made some strange geographic career moves in Arizona in the frying pan, then I moved to Vermont to the freezer, and then I like to say I finally got it right. I came to Ventura County, which is an absolutely gorgeous place to live with a very high quality of life. And I thank you, and I thank county staff for all you do to provide and protect that fine quality of life. The county has been represented on the Gold Coast and SCAT boards for the past 37 years. You've provided more than your share of leadership among the supervisors who represented you. I'd like to also thank Supervisor Bennett, who for a long time has been our alternate director. Takes a very active interest in transit issues in general, and especially those affecting his district, and has given us a lot of good input over the years, and some stern direction on occasion when we needed it. I'd like to thank Supervisor Zaragoza, who's been just a dream of a Chairman to serve. An incredible gentleman, a wonderful collaborator, and I just wish I'd gotten to know him sooner. I'd like to also-- his district and has given us a lot of good input over the years and, and some stern direction on occasion when we needed it. I'd like to thank Supervisor Zaragoza, who's been just a, a dream of a chairman to serve. An incredible gentleman, a wonderful collaborator, and I just wish I'd gotten to know him sooner. I'd like to also recognize and commend your staff, who, who I've worked so closely with. They are first-rate public administrators and you can be proud of them. Kathy Connell especially, I've worked closely with her. She's a member of our Technical Advisory Committee. Her now-retired boss, Butch Britt, who I know is here today, and her new boss, Dave Fleisch. All excellent people who do a great job of working cooperatively, but always remember that they work for this board and for, for the citizens and taxpayers of Ventura County. And I think you can be proud of them. And very last thing I want to say is thank you to Supervisor Zaragoza for giving me a memorable send-off. I, I have a few plaques at home, not as many as you guys get, but this is definitely the most heartfelt award I've ever gotten and I'm very appreciative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We also have, Madam Chair, we also have Ryan Brennan, who's also an alternate for Gold Coast and also represents, represents the city of Ventura. Is there anybody else that'd like to share anything at this time? I also want to thank Kathy Connell too and David Fleisch, you know, and also the city of Oxnard for, for being here today and thank you so much. And let's take a picture.
You guys want to take a picture with Kathy?
Yeah.
Kathy, come on.
Yes, Kathy.
And Butch, I saw Butch there somewhere.
Oh.
We can take a moment.
Walk right in front of him.
Okay.
I get in the back because I'm tall. I haven't had this one. I know, you always get this thing.
That's right, exactly.
I stopped smiling.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Well, I think that concludes the public portion of our Board of Supervisors meeting. I think we have a little bit more to go in closed session and then we'll go ahead and journey from closed session. So with that, see you next time.